Welcome to our November 13 Gilbert Town Council Study Session. We will begin with Agenda Item Number One in preparing for Thursday night. For the first part, I have down that Councilmember Peterson has the turn to introduce the scouts. Councilmember Daniels, if you could do Agenda Item Number Three, recognize our Coast to Coast Councilmember Sence, if you could recognize on Agenda Item Number Four to Town Manager Manager, is that something that councilmembers should be involved with or is it just to have some time allocated for presentation?
So Vice Mayor Sence, that would be a good -- okay, Vice Mayor Sence, Agenda Item Number Four. Councilmember Cooper, Agenda Item Number Five on Gilbert Days. And will we have lots of handouts for Gilbert Days and even a poster or something so people can see it and you can mention parade and rodeo and different things that would be part of that? So, yes, and then if we make sure, I know we have some handouts and for citizens who come, we want to make sure that if Councilmember Cooper holds up the handout that they can get that in the back of the room. Councilmember Cook, if you could do Agenda Item Five A, and Councilmember Ray, Agenda Item Five B. Any questions on that? Councilmember Daniels, what items would you like discussed in the study session?
I have none, Mayor.
Councilmember Ray?
I have a question for legal counsel on Item Forty-four.
Councilmember Cook?
I have none, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Sence?
Seven, ten, thirteen through fifteen.
Seven, ten, thirteen through fifteen, great, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I don't have any to add. Vice Mayor Sence covered some.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Okay. I have several, but I'll insert them in the appropriate spot, and let's start with Agenda Vice Mayor Sence, any particular question or?
Well, I guess I'm a little surprised at the point in time in which we're being notified of this, and I wanted to find out if the other sites, because I think this is one of four sites under consideration, if they also required an investment. And the other thing is, how are we avoiding the gift clause here? What are we getting in return to avoid the gift clause?
Mayor, Vice Member Sence, members of the council, my name is Dan Henderson. I'm the Economic Development Director for the town of Gilbert, and I'm delighted to talk to you today about the Item Number Seven, essentially the VA clinic. From a notification perspective, there were, at one point, hundreds of sites in play nationally, and as they whittled these projects down, we got wind that there were four sites in Gilbert and two sites in some other communities. Each site had their own sort of development requirements, development needs, everyone essentially had a different buy-in number, acquired land, different cost structures, et cetera. There was a point in time where responses going back to the feds from an RFP perspective were received and essentially information came back down through the channels that the VA clinic was asking each site to sharpen their pencils, so to speak. And at that point, we were receiving calls from all the developers and all the project teams that had sites in Gilbert, asking if there was any pencil sharpening that we could do on our sites and our developments. Across the board, we knew that one of the site location requirements was a bus stop. Some of the sites in Gilbert had the ability to have a bus stop, but because it was one of the site location requirements, we committed to all project teams that we would be happy to participate in one way, shape, or form from a bus turnout perspective as part of the site location requirements. As for the investment, again, every site had different buy-ins. There were some requests from staff and sort of unilaterally across boards and commissions asking the site to consider more intensity on the site, and the intensity on the site pushed some costs from an infrastructure perspective, and that was an area that we thought that we could provide public benefit from an infrastructure investment perspective, and that's what you're seeing today before you in the council communications, is a not-to-exceed or an up to $100,000 on a infrastructure reimbursement perspective, as well as up to not-to-exceed $40,000 from a bus turnout perspective. Members of the council, mayor, vice mayor, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's a general overview of the notification and the investment. As it pertains to the gift clause perspective, we've worked with town council and, or I should say, the town attorneys and have been counseled that, for the most part, what we have presented, of course, there are no guarantees, but it doesn't seem to violate the gift clause.
So, I think what I'm hearing, then, the commitment's already been made by the town, and now the council's being asked to back it up. Is that what I'm hearing?
Mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, there were discussions as to what the town could do. The town had some discussions with the developer, and through that process, this is what we discussed with the developer. At this point in time, there are no formal commitments, per se. That's why we're bringing it to mayor and council tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Ray?
Mayor, if I remember correctly, this was an e-session discussion where the council --
New.
We were made aware of this, exactly. This is not new to this.
I was listening because that was not new information to me, but it might have been or possibly in each session that was missed, so you've helped confirm that that was not new information for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Dan, I'm looking at Exhibit B, and Exhibit B was talking about the project description toward the bottom of, I guess, in the council packet, it was page number forty-five, but obviously it's probably different with yours. But I'm looking at the, probably the first page of Exhibit B. Very down toward the bottom, it talks about lead. The project is being designed to a lead, and I guess they're shooting for a silver standard. My question, is that what they are doing, or is that something that the town is asking them to accomplish for that building?
Mayor, members of the council, the leadership in energy and environmental design, the lead silver standard that this project is pursuing is not something that the town bargained or negotiated for.
So this is what they're wanting to do themselves?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, while you're up here, let's go to Agenda Item Number Ten. Oh, Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I, and I'm not revealing anything from e-session because I'm just here to say the details of this deal have not come to us in e-session, and I am concerned that we haven't had more time to digest this in detail. There, I don't know if there was a high-level something or not in e-session, maybe, but I don't recognize this from anything. So I think, I share some of those concerns that we need to look at. What is adequate consideration here? I don't, we know what our amount is, but what's, what are we getting in return? Where's the quantifying of that? I think there's some questions.
Councilmember Cooper, was that new information for you?
No, it wasn't new information, but I'm not recalling where.
Okay. Councilmember Cook? Here's, and maybe it was in e-session, that's where I want to bring us together, but if I recall, and both for Patrick and Dan, there were four sites that were finalists for Gilbert, and it seems like to, as Gilbert was competing with other sites, that was a discussion that was held, and that didn't all four sites have that as an option? Or was it just this site, or was it because this site needed it that that was discussed? That part I've also forgotten, but do you recall when that discussion started to take place with the town council?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't recall exactly when that discussion transpired with the council. I will, however, say that not-to-exceed $100,000 and the bus stop turnout were elements that every site, you know, had to essentially appel, and they were part of the site location requirements. The infrastructure perspective, not-to-exceed or up to $100,000, that was an effort by the town to ensure that the, that all the Gilbert site had, you know, sort of equal pairing, so to speak, and the conversations were not around one site or two sites or three sites, but yet all four sites, the town would participate at this level.
Sure. So to Vice Mayor Sence and Councilmember Peterson, I do want to make sure that all seven of us are in sync to the comment that Vice Mayor Sence made. This is a commitment the town made, and so the council didn't formally vote on it, but it was given to four potential sites as, as part of the attraction for Gilbert. So I, with that piece of information for the two of you, what should we discuss tonight? I'm sorry that that sounds like that's new information, but is there anything else you want to talk about tonight that would help you feel better?
Well, for my own part, I remember the four sites, and one of this may have been discussed in one of your economic development subcommittees, so, but I don't recall the discussion about $100,000 or $140,000 or whatever the number was in investment. I knew we were in competition, but, so, it is what it is.
Councilmember Peterson, anything else?
Mayor, my main concern is just to be able to make sure we've, I still don't have an answer to what the return on investment is. We know what we're giving, what are we getting, what's the adequate consideration, what's the dollar amount? I want to have that full understanding before I go forward with this, and I'm not seeing all those details yet.
Dan, is that something by Thursday that could be given to the council as far as additional information? Is that something that takes an extensive period of time?
Mayor, members of the council, we would be delighted to present an economic impact analysis that would talk about the overall project impacts in the community, begin to forecast based on the assumptions in the model, revenue projections, and I'm not certain if that would give you adequate consideration for what we get in return for what we give. If an economic impact analysis with revenue projections is satisfactory, we'd be prepared to present that information and provide that information by Thursday.
Whatever the law would require for us to substantiate that we're not gift clause. I mean, that's, that's what you tell me, so.
Mayor, maybe if we could have our town attorney talk to town participation on infrastructure so that we're clear on the gift clause.
It's my understanding from the town engineer that these, the infrastructure that, costs that are being reimbursed are public infrastructure costs, and the town does not have a gift clause problem with respect to reimbursing for public infrastructure, although it is your normal practice that the developer pays for the infrastructure. That is a practice, and it was my analysis after talking to a lot of people on staff, it was my analysis that, that the town only departs from the requirement that developers pay for infrastructure when they feel, when the town feels it is getting something different, something special, and that the VA building was, fit that category because it was very much needed and wanted in this community. So although I don't think there's a gift clause problem, I'm always worried about departing from your standard requirements that developers pay for off-site improvements, and there, I always request that there be a really good reason to do that, and so I was convinced that there was.
What about the drainage improvements? That's, is that public infrastructure?
I think I'll turn to the town engineer.
Dan, while Mike is coming up on an economic impact analysis, excuse me, and that sometimes takes time, so is that feasible that that's going to be ready by Thursday?
Mayor, members of the council, we'll have the economic impact analysis done by Thursday.
And is that something, especially for the two of you, that you'd like in an email to look at as soon as possible? Okay. Okay, thank you. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Mike Gillespie, Town Engineer. The question of the drainage improvements, those improvements are all private improvements. The tract that it drains to was in the original development, set aside for drainage for all of the parcels, and all of the piping and all of the grading that's necessary for that is all private infrastructure owned by the owners of those lots.
Thank you. Let's go to ten, and then we'll come back to nine while Dan's standing.
We'll have Kelly.
I'll pass the baton, please, Kelly. And Vice Mayor Sence, anything specific on ten that?
Well, yeah, I was just questioning the amount that we're paying. How does it compare to some of the surrounding cities? What's been the trend over the last four or five years? And then, what's the details of these seven projects that have been located in Gilbert? I'm just trying to see if we're, is this a prudent investment of $83,000 of our general fund?
Thank you. General question, please.
Yes, Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Sence, council members, my name is Kelly Patton. I'm the Economic Development Manager here at the town of Gilbert. Vice Mayor, I did receive your phone call and put together just some quick numbers to hopefully answer some of those questions that you, that you asked. There is a funding request for fiscal year thirteen for $83,208. As was in your council communication, there is a formula that GPEC uses to calculate this. So based on the Arizona Department of Administration, 2011 Office of Employment population Gilbert is noted as 213,519. Per capita rate of 39 cents gives us that total of 83,208 for fiscal year thirteen. Fiscal year twelve, the total contract amount, 69 and some change, that included a 15 percent reduction. Over the past couple of years, GPEC has allowed that 15 percent reduction to all communities based on economic hardships and times and budgetary reasons. Funding for fiscal year eleven was 72, a little bit larger, simply because the population was taken from MAG as opposed to the Arizona Department of Administration. So that, why, that's why that number reflects a 15 percent reduction, but a little bit higher. One of the questions related to some of our surrounding communities and how much they pay, again, basically what we did is we took the, the population number from the Arizona Department of Administration times the per capita rate. So you see Chandler at 93, Mesa, obviously a little larger per population, at 172, Scottsdale 85, and then Tempe is the only community surrounding us that's lower than our, the allocation for Gilbert, simply because of those population numbers. We put together a five-year impact analysis based on GPEC's impact in the community. There are seven companies that have been GPEC locates within the last five years. Web Loyalty, M&amp;M Industries, Commerce Insurance, Colnatech, Helier, Aquinity Interactive, and then there's one pending projects that we are still working to announce. Out of those five companies, 801 new jobs have been announced, 39.46 payroll, 75 capex, 270,000 square feet commercial real estate absorbed, and from our economic impact analysis, that shows a 789,000 total economic impact, and that's direct and indirect. So if you look at, trying to define direct as property sales, utilities, state shared revenues, indirect being some of those revenues generated by supply or retails and other consumer jobs that take place as a result of those new companies coming into the community. From a regional perspective, so the Phoenix metropolitan region, GPEC's five-year impact is 125 companies, 20,000 jobs, 853 million in payroll, and 1.5 in capital investment in the past five years. And I just threw in for fiscal year thirteen, some of GPEC's targeted numbers in terms of their goals for, for the next 12 months. One number I did notice was not up here is their capital investment target. Last year in fiscal year thirteen, they, they achieved 700 million in announced capital investment, so I would assume that that, they bumped that number up to 800 or so. I could get that exact number for you if it's of interest. So with that, those were just the specific questions that were asked by the council members, so hopefully that answers. One thing I do want to talk about or mention, too, is the national marketing and branding support that GPEC offers us from a regional perspective. They are, they are great at bringing projects to the community, they're a great lead generator for us, market intelligence, research and database support. I, we are in constant communication with their team on a daily basis. So with that, I would ask for your consideration for approval for.
I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Cook?
The question I have is the per capita numbers that you showed, could you go back to that slide real quickly as it showed the other cities?
Sure. This one?
I think of Gilbert being kind of a bedroom community where we have lots of children, and it seems like to me the per capita rate might be, again, I'm just throwing this out, based upon the number of square foot of commercial property that we've already identified, because I'm just thinking that maybe we get dinged a little bit more because we have more children versus, you know, maybe a more substantial type of metric more toward the economic or business. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, this is, that question may be more suited for GPEC because this is the formula that they have used historically to identify funding levels. As the Gilbert community continues to grow, we have more opportunity with new commercial property coming onboard, but again, in terms of the number of leads that GPEC generates for us, it's the same for us as it would be for Chandler, Mesa, Scottsdale, or any of those other communities that are identified on that list.
Councilmember Peterson?
Can you go back to the economic impact slide? You said that was a five-year?
Yes, sir.
So if we average it out, we would take that and divide by five to find out an annual? Yes, or no?
Correct. If you, if you wanted to take an average, yes.
Okay. And then what about if we separated direct from indirect? What does that look like? Can you tell me?
Scott, do you remember that number? I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Peterson, we, if we don't have that, we can absolutely get that for you, yeah. I don't, do you remember what that number is? I don't have it.
Roughly speaking, I think it was per year, it averages out to, what, about 160? I think it's, and I have to double-check, it's at my desk, I think it works out to about 40 and 120, so 40 direct, 120 indirect. Give or take.
And again, we can confirm that information. I apologize, it's not delineated.
Other questions? Thank you. Thanks, Kelly. Scott, let's move to number nine. I had asked Scott to provide a picture related to Helier of this change, and it's not that we needed an extensive discussion, but just so the council could see for public consumption also, please, Scott.
We'll have to orientate based upon this right up here being, being towards the north, so, and then to the south, which will be Germaine Road, the existing 202 business park, to give you some orientation. The green gives you the, oops, wrong way. The green gives you the site in which we control, which is roughly 40 acres, and the blue is what will be item nine, of changing the legal description. It was roughly about there, so it went from the north 20 to what now I'm affectionately calling the middle 20. The little carve-out that you see right here is the cell phone tower, and so, but nothing that, their site plan more or less remains the same, it just slides down. So it creates a little over 200-foot buffer between the, the road, there's still a berm there, and so that's the site plan. Nothing else changes within the lease except the legal description.
Thank you. Anything else on nine? Thank you, Scott. Edgar, on 13 through 15, let me just interject with Vice Mayor Sence before your question. In our South Gilbert Study Session, Edgar had presented a list of our upcoming projects, and 13, 14, 15, I believe are on that list. So Edgar, just give us a quick overview, a reminder of where these projects fit in, and then Vice Mayor Sence will turn to you.
Well, Mayor, the zoom out button currently isn't.
Mark, we'll let you be the assistant there for Edgar.
Mayor Lewis, council members, Edgar Medina, Assistant Towne Jr. over capital projects. Items number 13, 14, and 15 are all CIP contracts for professional services for CIP numbers. ST 152, which is the Higley and Warner intersection improvements, ST 58, which is the Germaine Road improvements, and then ST 129 is the Gilbert-Wadalupe intersection improvements. Mayor, you mentioned the, the off-site study session that we had at Seville, and you're right, this is the exhibit that we had, and we had identified two of the projects on that list. Gilbert-Wadalupe wasn't on that because it was the north part of town, but in general, if you look at, yeah, right there, two of the projects are number five, which is the Germaine Road improvements, which is improvements widening to a major arterial, which is six lanes of improvements from Val Vista to Higley. Right now, the improvements are primarily kind of a scallop condition, so we're going to fully widen that, that roadway to arterial section. And then.
Edgar, just on four and five, where we had our executive housing presentation last Thursday night, which was a wonderful event that the chamber sponsored, Street of Dreams will be coming. What's the timing? Will, will some of that be done, all of it done, or just started by the time Street of Dreams takes place?
Mayor Lewis, council members, project number four is complete now. It was actually complete back in March of 2000. No.
How about five?
Five is, assuming it's approved, the design contract is approved on Thursday, we anticipate to be bidding the project around September of 2013, so the construction would be just about beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Right in the middle.
Continue, I interrupted you.
Oh, no. And then the second, or the other project that we have is number 11, which is the, the Higley and Warner intersection improvements, and that is a full intersection improvements at Higley and Warner with some interim improvements from the 202 to the intersection, and then from the intersection to the Mesquite alignment, which is a half mile north, and then some minor improvements on either the west and, and the east leg. And then the third project is the, is the Higley-Gilbert-Wadalupe intersection widening project.
Thank you. And you have reminded me that Gilbert-Wadalupe was not on there because that was a South Gilbert view, but thank you. Vice Mayor Sence, to the other 13, 14, 15 items?
It was a general question. When I was going through the staff reports, I did not see anything about bidding, and I talked to Edgar just before the meeting, and I'd like you to kind of reiterate what you told me on all three of these, please.
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Sence, yes, I did not communicate well in the, in the council communications in the sense about the procurement process. We did follow state statutes in terms of the procurement. We did a multi-selection for professional service under one procurement process. We did a multi-selection for professional service under one procurement process. So we did do that back in September of this year, and this is the result of the top three firms that were selected.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Edgar. Thank you. And please, on 13, 14, 15?
Yeah, just to clarify, and this was the important point to me, this was a competitive process. It's not an RFP, it's a qualifications-based process, but it was a competitive process. So that was the important point for me.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Edgar. Oh, Councilmember Daniels?
Edgar, I have a general question. You probably got my voicemail too late in the day, but on 13, 14, and 15, along with some of the others that we've seen, I recognize that these are engineering, that they're going to be going out to assess really the need. But how are we prioritizing these streets projects? There was an article in the paper not too long ago talking about, you know, our most troublesome intersections and things like that. How are we prioritizing the projects? I realize at some point they were done through the CIP process, but has there been a reanalysis of that based on growth in the community and what we've seen as far as traffic and hazard?
Mayor Lewis, our councilmember Daniels, that's a very good question. We recently completed an intersection circulation master plan in which we've identified, you know, through criteria of level of service, crash data, number of vehicles entering and exiting the certain intersections to identify what the priorities are. And those criteria, the priorities are not only based on the actual volume, but on the existing conditions of the intersection. We don't have a prioritization on straight segments because you typically get your congestion at the intersections, and that's what we primarily try to correct. We are right now in the process of advertising, or actually have gone through our qualification-based election, do a townwide transportation master plan that's going to take a look at other components of our streets circulation.
Councilmember Cook?
This is a question I've asked in the past, and it's about the prioritization of CIP projects. Where's your staff at in presenting that report to the council with the metrics that you had come up with?
Mayor Lewis, councilmember Cook, we are at that point where we can be coming back to council for a report. And I may be getting ahead of myself slightly, we have implemented a prioritization criteria in this year's CIP update. We have just now finished the initial call for projects in which staff members, department heads, are required to identify the projects that are required for their department, as well as identify the priority, and under what criteria are they necessary, and rank them. We're probably going to, as we go through the department meetings, I'll start putting together a report that I could bring back to council with that data.
Thank you. Anything else on 13, 14, 15? Councilmember Cook?
Just a reminder of a question I asked a while back on the same prioritization, that economic development interests also be reflected in that prioritization, and so that we can kind of help those areas that would be right for development if they had that infrastructure that might be needed there.
Mayor Lewis, councilmember Cooper, and economic development is one of the items of criteria in this year's update.
Thank you. Thank you, Edgar. 11. I went to 13 too fast, so 11 we also wanted to discuss. Please, Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the council. On Thursday night's agenda, there is an item for a change order to the existing contract with CH2M Hill to provide additional water management staff augmentation, as well as additional support in our water quality division. As a precursor to the discussion of this request, I wanted to remind the council not only of the steps we've taken so far, but also to come back with what we had promised previously for that second part of the management and operational review. So this evening, we're going to do a very condensed presentation to you to kind of bring you up to speed. Just as a reminder, at the last council study session, Kevin Dixon, the Director of Environmental Compliance for CH2M, presented the primary findings of the compliance and reporting audit. Although the good news was that we are in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act, and that is not insignificant in and of itself, what we've also discovered is that we really are meeting minimums here and not exceeding, and that's not in line with our town's vision for best-in-class services. Some of the issues that we found, as we discussed previously, there's issues with our quality control, quality assurance process, a lack of training and cross-training between the labs at our plants, and an active and unfortunately sometimes intentional lack of communication between the divisions. We are preparing for a sanitary survey from the Department of Health Services in 2013, and we currently have two existing vacancies within our lab staff alone. Tonight, you will hear from myself, as well as from Rob Cuda, Regional Business Group Manager for CH2M Hill, as we present some of the initial findings of the management audit. As you will hear, there are some important issues that have come to light in the past few months, and we have a unique opportunity now to remedy these through a recommended collaboration with CH2M Hill. As we've said before, not only at the dais, but also within our town management meetings and our staff, the enemy of the great is often the good. And so tonight, we'll discuss ways to ensure that we truly are pursuing best-in-class services in our water division. With that, I'd like to introduce Rob Cuda, Regional Business Group Manager for CH2M Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name, again, Robert Cuda with CH2M Hill. It's my pleasure to give you a brief overview of our findings and our current scope with So we primarily had two tasks under our role here with the town, and those were divided into staff augmentation for water management at the city's water production facilities, where we took the roles of those four positions identified above there, filled with CH2M Hill professionals. The individuals who took those roles have nearly 100 years of water production experience in plants surrounding the globe. So we felt we had a very good team here to take on the challenge of the second phase of our scope, which was the operational review. And in that scope, we looked very comprehensively at the operations and maintenance aspects of your utility, as well as the communication amongst and between the departments within the utilities group of water production, and then the data and acquisition reporting that's also important in maintaining regulatory compliance, and then finally, safety and security at the facilities themselves. And briefly here are our initial findings, which I'm happy to say that you have a lot to be comfortable with, with our review. And first and foremost is that our team identified that you have a highly qualified staff. You have individuals at your utility in this production department, understand their jobs, understand the importance of their role in providing clean, reliable, potable water to your community. We also noted that of the assets, they're well-maintained and operated, not only from aesthetic standpoint, but from maintenance and reliability standpoint. So that was a very good finding. And there's a strong culture of those individuals on your town staff of safety and security awareness, which is never at a loss when dealing with potable water. Next was effective treatment processes were in place. The means by which your community treats its water and conveys it to the distribution system was found to be, you know, in the view of our professionals in order. And then the question of the fluoride facilities, they're fully operational at the Santan-Vista facility, as you well know by now. And then at the North Plant, we're preparing for the improvements to make those facilities fully operational early next year. So with those findings, we did develop some areas of interest, and keeping in mind, again, that we were serving in the capacity of providing management leadership to the staff at the plants, we found that it was important to improve the communications and coordination amongst the various aspects of the water utility, primarily between the water quality group, as well as the water resource division as it relates to the water production facility. Those three departments, it's integral that they talk and communicate on a regular basis, and we encourage that to continue. Further water resource planning, as a mayor and council, you may know, you have several water resources to which the town has provided, and it is key that you understand how those are managed in a forward-looking aspect, so that you take full advantage and mitigate risk in those water resource assets going forward. Also, we looked at the development of emergency procedures. There are hazardous materials and chemicals used in the treatment process. It's inherent that those procedures are reviewed on a regular basis, developed and reviewed on a regular basis, and as well as being in concert with your other emergency services throughout the town as water relates. The review and vision of standard operating procedures, we found in our review that many of the SOPs, when initially developed, were not reviewed or maintained over time, and so there's a key aspect of safeguarding that that is put into practice going forward. Enhancing the training for staff, part of our findings were trying to gather the means and methods by which water is treated and conveyed out of the plants, and there's ongoing needs and efforts around training on critical aspects of that treatment process that the staff needs to be brought up to speed on. And then finally, supervisory and mentoring and training. The positions that we filled are absolutely key to, the positions that we filled on an interim basis, I should say, and to be filled by city staff going forward, it's absolutely critical that they bring forward in those positions, the leadership and the mentoring to the underpinning of the staff, so that you have a comprehensive utility running forward. And while we serve that in that capacity on interim basis, that is an absolutely critical component to the hiring of the vacancies that the town now faces. And these, you know, can't be understated that this is a very important item. So with that, next steps, I'm going to hand this back to Nicole, I believe, to talk about where we go from here, and I'll stand by to answer any questions for you.
Okay, so Rob kind of walked you through a couple of these issues we talked about in terms of the importance of effective leadership and communication, and some of the procedural review. We've looked at continuing to challenge staff to optimize processes, and really, as we discussed, implementing that truly comprehensive system of water quality management, and so that's integral with the communication between the divisions, to not just have some of these silos operating without good communication when it's such an important and critical resource for our town. What I'd like to get into is a little bit more, as we've touched on, is some of the specific challenges that we're seeing. One is that culture of leadership development. You heard Rob mention how critical this is, not just in terms of what we're doing with the staff that we have on, but as we look forward to filling some of the vacancies, and there are an extensive number of vacancies within the water department, this is critical. The issue of cross-training not occurring isn't only found in the labs, it's also found between the plants themselves. Some of this has to do with the fact that there are different processes in place at the Santan-Vista Water Treatment Plant than there are at the North Water Treatment Plant. This is an area where we've identified an opportunity for improvement of that support between the two plants, really, and that would require cross-training. To do so is difficult and next to impossible when you don't have a full staff, and we currently have two and possibly three impending vacancies within our water treatment plant operators alone. Establishment of best practices, and we talked a little bit about some of the SOPs, the standard operating protocols that hadn't been reviewed, aren't up to date. We talked a little bit about the collaboration with other divisions within the town in terms of our emergency response plan and working with Sherri Gibbons in emergency management and emergency preparedness. These aren't things to be taken lightly, they are not things to be put on the shelf for later discussion. These are things that we need to be addressing now because they are critical to the safety, not just of our own staff, but of the town of Gilbert citizens as well. I mentioned the high number of vacancies. These are occurring at all levels within the water division, and what you'll see from the water manager position down through the positions in the lab, as well as I mentioned some of the plant operators, we're finding these across some of the other divisions in water as well. This is concerning on a number of levels, one from retention of employees, one from future development of the division moving forward, the ability of staff to properly train these individuals as those vacancies are filled. And so that leads down to not being able to develop a culture of innovation. The town of Gilbert has historically had and still has a commitment to continuous quality improvement. CQI, as we call it, is an integral way of life here in Gilbert, and it's difficult to do so when that culture doesn't exist within a department. We mentioned the silos. We've also talked about some of the communications and collaboration going on between some of the divisions. The CH2M staff has established some what could be considered very basic weekly, daily, and monthly meetings, very basic reports that simply weren't in place before, and these are standard operating protocols typically as you would find in a water operation elsewhere. Those have been started. Our goal is to make sure that they are continued and improved upon, and so that we have appropriate communication, not just within water, but within the appropriate management levels of the town as well. And I understand that's been a concern of the council. That's something that we'd like to address. And finally, that comprehensive water management approach, not separating water resources and the long-term water needs of Gilbert from the current operations, and not keeping quality separate from water production and water distribution, and that's really what we're looking at moving forward. So this is a specific challenge set. Staff believes it requires a specific set of solutions. When we brought forward this recommendation, there was a number of solutions that we looked at in terms of utilizing existing staff, possibly looking at some interim appointments, possibly looking at other options for interim support, possibly looking at advisory options only in terms of what we would recommend in future collaboration with CH2M Hill. And what we found, looking at all of those options, there are some specific things that you lose. First and foremost is that bare minimum versus best-in-class. Possible regulatory compliance regulation violations, reverting back to old ways, old cultures, and losing this momentum that we're building and trying to move forward. The issue with the vacancies and not having enough people to do so and to staff those positions appropriately, as well as the lack of cross-training and the succession planning that has not occurred unfortunately within this department. Our goal is to have an organization that's ready for this transition. We have a unique opportunity now to prepare the department for the next steps. We have a new Public Works Director coming on. We are getting ready to begin the recruitment for the water manager, as well as some of the other vacancies that you've noted in the department. And so this change order to the contract is being recommended specifically to fulfill this. There's a provision for an interim water manager, additional staff support for the water quality division. It's explicit in the scope of work that there will be on-the-job training provided, so this isn't simply a Band-Aid, it's truly an infrastructure building for the future. There's an ability to be flexible and responsive as needs change. If these recruitments go quickly and we have great candidates and are able to bring them onboard sooner, we have provisions in the contract to be able to allow us to move quickly to do that while providing that appropriate level of transition. And again, ultimately and most importantly, is to fulfill the town's vision of being best-in-class in all lines of service, and that's why we're bringing this recommendation forward. With that, I will answer any questions. I also have Rob, as well as Ryan Rhodes here from CH2M Hill, if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. And I know that you have been proactively talking with council members, giving these updates, and so this is a good summary we also wanted the public to be aware of. Related to the presentation, agenda item number 11, any questions from the council? Councilmember Cook?
So I do have a question. It was mentioned that through the analysis, that our water quality obviously is safe and has met the minimum requirements. Is that correct?
Yes.
Knowing with all the challenges that we have, and the things that you presented, maybe raise the bar on a number of different things. My question is, if we are already making the minimum, and it's safe, what is the new metric then that we're shooting for by adding all these new processes and different folks on staff? Because if we're meeting that, which to me, it sounds like we're lucky, maybe, I don't know, but I'm trying to understand here, with all these improvements, what's the new metric now that we're shooting for if we're already making the minimum safety of the quality of water?
Right. I think there's multiple metrics here, and again, some of these are being established as we onboard new leadership into the division and the department as a whole. One of those is a higher level of expectation of management practices, both within... One of those is a higher level of expectation of management practices, both within culture and communication. I know Councilmember Cook, you and I, as well as the council as a whole, have discussed some of the communications challenges in the past. That becomes a new metric for leadership within the division. That becomes a new emphasis, a focus area, if you will, for the Water Manager in looking over those departments, not accepting the minimum and not just saying, oh hey, I heard we passed the test, but being proactive in that and understanding it, being able to have additional quality control beyond that. In addition to that, there's a financial aspect to this, as we do not currently have a monitoring plan, as that becomes developed, and as we look at some efficiencies within our management of our external lab contract, that becomes a financial metric. There are financial efficiencies that can be found through changing some of those lab practices, and so that would be one that I would expect to see moving forward as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
I think the public may be curious about the vacancies and why so many vacancies. Is there some information you can provide us on that?
The vacancies, there's multiple reasons from what we've been hearing from the divisions. One of those is just a natural shift within divisions as other positions become available elsewhere. One of the reasons that we're hearing is that financially, we're not competitive with some of these processes. We've compared recruitments to some other cities, and there are a couple of the positions that do pay differently than Gilbert does, and so we're examining those in terms of a very well-identified class and compensation study. Those have been targeted as vulnerability areas. Another issue to consider is the culture, and just to be very straightforward with this, one of the things that you find when there's a lack of communication between divisions, when there's not hands-on management approach and detailed succession planning, and employees don't feel like there's room to move up, sometimes other places become attractive. In addition to that, you have the economy recovering, there's been the Intel Plant Development, the Maricopa Okchin Indian Community is building a plant, and so you're starting to see simply just a greater availability within the job market. So these are positions that are, as we've mentioned, highly qualified, there are certifications at all levels, and so these individuals oftentimes do have the ability to be competitive elsewhere. We are taking a look at that in a number of different ways, in terms of changing recruitment, as well as developing an internship program, so almost a feeder line through some partnerships out there, but the reality is that that's where some of these are shifting.
Mayor, follow-up?
Please.
Yeah, I think, and I think you guys have done as good a job as you can in managing this issue. Also, I'm grateful to CH2M Hill for their expertise and their assistance. That being said, this is a very expensive course correction, if you will, and my thoughts are that we expedite, and it sounds like you are, recruitment of our staff so that we're not necessarily using all of these funds up here. How does the class and comp study, and how is this affecting our recruiting ability, what we're going to be offering for these positions?
I'm angling for HR Director right now. Carrie is better suited to answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In regards to how this relates with the class and comp study, we currently are underway and still on track for the class and comp study report out on December 20th. We're also working on our talent management strategy and looking at our workforce planning as it relates to succession planning and identifying vulnerabilities. So this is an area that we have seen as a major vulnerability within the organization, and recently, we have expanded our recruitment, the pipeline in terms of where we're targeting, getting qualified candidates, but this is, these are positions that we're working with consultants on, and this is, in terms of the Water Treatment Plant Operator, that is one of the 50 benchmark positions, you know, that will be evaluated.
So are we organizing ourselves in a way that we can recruit the best and brightest for these positions, or are we going to set ourselves up for, if we've got recruiting going on right now in kind of a simultaneous process with the class and comp study, are we going to be able to hire at the right level?
I'm not sure this is on the agenda. We're talking about a contract with CH2M Hill. I don't think it's on the agenda.
That stops that discussion, let's move on. Thank you. Anything else for Nicole? Councilmember Daniels?
Thanks, Mayor. Nicole, I'm hearing that despite some of the hurdles that we've had to overcome, that things are moving in the right direction, and that we have great staff who are willing to work to improve the departments in whatever ways that we can, and I appreciate all of those efforts that are being made. I also recognize that, as Councilmember Cooper said, this is a very expensive course correction, and when I met with you one-on-one, that was your statement, that this isn't cheap. I think the reason that I am willing, and probably other members of the council as well, are willing to make an investment particularly in an area such as this, is because this has to do with health, safety and welfare of our citizens, both in the short term and the long term. And so while this, and we do not ever want this to be, you know, a common occurrence in the town, recognizing the challenges that have come to us up until this point, and then the opportunity, as you've stated, that we have to improve, to be better, to accomplish our vision as an organization, we're taking advantage of those opportunities as they've been made available to us. And I know that you guys have used this scenario in part of the leadership forums that we've had in the town, is what not to do, or how not, how to avoid something like this. One of the things that we've talked about is that bad news never gets better with age, and so as often as we can to be forthcoming and open with the areas of concern within the town, particularly as it relates to those items of health, safety and welfare, how important those are for us to address immediately. So I appreciate the efforts that are being made on your time, as well as the interim management, and the proactive nature that our Water Departments, both our Water and our Wastewater, have been so active in helping us to course correct. And so again, I appreciate those efforts, I want to make sure that our staff knows that we appreciate that, and we recognize their efforts and that there are challenges, but they're facing them head-on, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Nicole and Rob, thank you. Linda Edwards, if you could please come forward. We have typically left our public hearing items for the formal council meeting. There are just a couple of items that I think will help us for Thursday night, and if you notice on the public hearing, there are a long list of zoning agenda items, and I ask Linda to just give us the quick overview, knowing from what I'm hearing so far, the council members have not had a concern with it, and if all of a sudden Thursday night we don't bring it up, for the public also to be aware. So Linda, if you can give us that overview, and can you remind us from, it's Agenda Item 28, to which number would be your summary of why we have so many zoning items?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We are looking at Item Number 28 through 37. There are 13 rezonings, we're calling them assisted rezonings, and I did a little recap for you, which I was going to put up here, but I'm happy just to verbalize it very quickly with you. Basically, in the last few years, we literally did hundreds of annexations because of Real Metro leaving the community. Oh, perfect, thank you. Let's see, so there's your recap. Basically, with so many annexations, there were a few glitches along the way. One is, well, our community had a lot on our plate at the time, and then we went through a market crash, and we lost half our staff, and all those kinds of things. Also, on the good side of things, we have improved our GIS system internally, and we're able to layer our annexations and zonings and do a little color match, and we found some holes in our zoning map. So that's why these cases came up, because we realized land was annexed and not zoned. And here's a recap of those 13 cases. Three tried for commercial, and then they withdrew, went away, and they never rezoned the property. One tried for multifamily, didn't happen, didn't get the community's support, they withdrew, and so we need the property rezoned. One is an 80-acre parcel where a home builder was going forward with annexation, the market crashed, they walked away. In the 1985 and 1984, you can see there was a little strip of canal or right-of-way that was just found by a map layering, and there was a hole there, so we're going back and rezoning it. Two are cases that are strips along the Santan Freeway. That does happen when you annex a lot of right-of-way, you go back, and as development occurs, you rezone, and with the mapping technique, we found a couple of strips that needed to be, along with the six below there you can see. So really, a total of eight cases that are strips of land or right-of-way that needs to be in the town, so we have jurisdiction on it, maintenance and all those good things. The larger annexation was the Rockefeller Project that came in on the south side of Jermaine, they did not want to rezone the property they did not own, and that was left unzoned, so we're taking that in, and also is a little piece of right-of-way and canal. And then the other one where it says the annexation with several property owners, this is Power and Warner, and there's quite a handful of owners in there, and over the last couple of years, a lot of ownership changes. So we've contacted all the owners, and they do agree this is the best way to go about it, and they're in support of it, so that's a quick overview. And then also, the benefit is that, of course, we have jurisdiction, development can occur quickly with the appropriate property zoning, and of course, for emergency purposes too, that we can support the community.
So on Thursday, if 28 to 37 moves quickly, and we don't have individuals at which to speak on it, a reason why is this is annexation cleanup?
Well, it's a rezoning cleanup, but yes, you are correct, Mayor. And we have been in touch with all the owners and their parties, and I've kept detailed notes and emails and phone calls, and there is no opposition. Many have signed the Prop 207, and many have also signed the application.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. 44 was one additional public hearing item that with some minor discussion, I think will be helpful, and Councilmember Ray, I know you had a question on it, I did too. Let me jump in on mine, not that I take priority, but I think it will help in the discussion. Al, a couple of discussions that have come from the council. So this is a discussion about a piece of property, the council's receiving a lot of information, and we will move forward on Thursday. One item I wish to mention that I believe the council's received is because of this great interest and a conflict with some of the citizens that wanted to come and participate, we have communicated to those four, and those against, specifically to the lawyers involved, that we will not begin discussion on Agenda Item 44 until 8:30 PM. Did all of you receive that information? Okay. I won't go into detail, other than just for the public to be aware of that, that there's a plan in place, we'll do the best we can to be flexible, but also to follow the plan and do our best to make sure everyone feels like they were treated fairly, and that adequate time was allowed, and at the same time, we're not duplicating efforts. And so, Al, with that said, not to have you get into the specifics of, which we'll have you do on Thursday night, one additional question that came from the council was because the Planning Commission approved what will be discussed on Thursday night with a 4-2 vote, but it was appealed, for this to be approved, does this need to be a 6-1 vote? Or is it simply a 4-3 vote?
The supermajority for protest does not apply, just the regular majority vote will apply.
Okay, so still 4-3 vote. And one of the concerns that's been raised, which I think will be helpful for you to answer tonight, is those in opposition in a certain subdivision feel like they were not notified. Do you have any details on that you could share with the council? I think the council's heard that, were concerned, and there may be an adequate answer, but if you could fill us in on that.
Yes, Mayor Lewis, Al Ward with the Planning Department. Originally, when this application was submitted out, the applicant used a form of measurement that wasn't quite adequate, he measured from the center of the property 300 feet versus the edge of the property. And once that was determined, it was re-notified, so additional notices did go out to meet the full notification requirements.
If there are some citizens that say they did not get notified, did we have an answer for that? And did that come up in the Planning Commission meeting?
Mayor Lewis and members of council, yes, it did. It was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. There has been an affidavit provided with a list of names, as well as a diameter of 300 feet from the edge of the property. Those are the lists that are received from Maricopa County Assessor's records, and that's the mailing list that we use.
Thank you. Before I go to Councilmember Cook, let me now jump to Councilmember Ray, you had some comments on this or questions?
I did. So this is for Susan. This project, conditional use permit was approved from planning and zoning, it's since been appealed by some surrounding neighbors. Because this is my first appeal that we're receiving, is this a policy decision? If we wanted to reverse that appeal, do we have to find that planning and zoning did something wrong? On what level do we have to find as a council before we can approve or reverse the decision of planning and zoning?
Councilmember Ray, I did commit to Ben Cooper, Councilmember Cooper, that by Thursday night, I would have an organized rollout of that specific, of questions of which that would be a part, but I'll try to answer that now. You don't have to have like a reverse of policy. I believe that you have to have a fact, you have to have sufficient facts to deny a conditional use permit, which is what the effect would be if you reversed the Planning Commission. The concern can't just be, or the fact can't just be that people fear something will happen in the future, there has to be facts in the record that would support a denial, if it meets all of the requirements in the Land Development Code for a use permit. And just remembering that the reason it's there needing a use permit is that you've, by adopting the code where it's a permitted use in a zone, you've said it's appropriate, except that it may cause some negative impacts on other properties which might have to be mitigated, which is the point of the conditional use permit and conditions that might be put on the use permit. So basically, it's, the town has to have some fact, some facts in the record that would justify denial of the permit.
And it sounds like you're going to send additional information by Thursday, sometime on Thursday.
I'm going to try to summarize the law on conditional use permits in Arizona, to the extent that there's any good law on conditional use permits in Arizona.
And as you know, the earlier we can get it on Thursday, the more helpful that is. Thank you, Susan.
So you want something in writing?
It would be helpful if we had an email beforehand that just gave us-
Sure, I can do that.
Guidelines.
Councilmember Cook?
Al, a quick question. In measuring that, was it 300 feet radius for sending out the notices to the adjacent property owners, did that actually, 300 feet, be measured from the south edge of the church? Is that what you did? Because I know that the parking lot of the church is part of the process, and to me, if I were to notify the adjacent property owners, I would probably go down to the south edge of that church, and then, you know, or at least around that, to grab as many of those property owners. Did that happen by chance?
Councilmember Cook, no, that did not happen, and here's the explanation of that. What we're dealing with is a use permit for a banquet facility on the subject 1.12 acre lot. Now, there was a previous administrative use permit for shared parking, which also included the church, the banquet facility and the church, and that had a separate notification, and that's not the subject of the appeal. The appeal is strictly for the banquet facility. There's already an administrative use permit in place for shared parking between this lot and the adjoining church.
The reason why I ask is because it's been a little confusing for me about that other permit of the parking lot, because it seems like some of the homeowners to the south actually were not notified about that permit, and I don't know what type of, I didn't read the minutes in the planning and zoning related to that particular item coming up on agenda. Can you share a little bit more about that particular permit?
Yes. Councilmember Cook, before this use permit for the banquet facility was submitted, was a request for a shared parking agreement, which is an administrative use permit, which was approved on August 2nd by the zoning administrator- was approved on August 2nd by the zoning administrator. And that provided for shared parking between the church and this site and this site in the church. That was notified, was sent out. It did not follow the full distance. It did not go all the way around the church. It was just measured from the banquet facility. But there was an appeal period, an ability to appeal on that, which I believe expired on August 12th. And there were no letters that came in of appeal. It was also a placard, a sign that was posted on this site as well.
Thank you. Anything else? There is some additional information that came from the Carriage Park subdivision, and they ask that would, some of you have some of this information, but maybe not all of it. And so, just to be safe, we've handed that out to each of you. Al, thank you. I realize Thursday, we'll get into more detail. Is there anything else that you felt like would be helpful for the council that is appropriate for a study session?
Just two things quickly. I want to mention that there was a petition. There's been a lot of emails that have come in. There was a petition opposed to it that came in with the Planning Commission meeting. And the other thing is, with the conditions, the applicant has been very cooperative in providing mitigation efforts to address the primary concerns that have been raised.
Thank you. And you'll be our first speaker on Thursday night to give us the overview.
Five minutes.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Vice Mayor, send?
Do you want to go through that process tonight, or do you want to wait till Thursday?
I think, as I looked around, because you've received that notification and that I just wanted to communicate to our town leadership that we do have a plan in place as far as managing time, and we'll do that on Thursday night, too. Thank you. There are a few discussion items related to future meetings that'll be helpful, but I think I'd like to get back to the study session. We have three items to discuss. Let's go through those and we'll see how we do time-wise, and that will help us when we come back to the future meetings, whether we do that through email or in this meeting. So Agenda Item Number Two on the study session is related to the bed tax. And I understand we have a short presentation on that. Is that correct? Scott, please.
Thank you, Your Honor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. Our team to discuss the bed tax includes myself, John Olson from the Finance Tax Division. We also have Don Irvine from the Office of Management and Budget. And I also have members from our stakeholders Tourism Committee that are here, that if there are specific questions for them, you certainly have them also to draw on. Before I actually make a very brief presentation, I just want you to imagine 20 million visitors coming through Gateway Airport over the next 10 years. And at this point, 92% of those visitors go through Gilbert going somewhere else. I also want you to imagine that each visitor party, which is two people, spends over $300 a day with an average stay of 5.8 days. What we'd like to do is get to a point where we're capturing more of those people staying in Gilbert. And part of the way we do that is through a bed tax, because the bed tax is what we use to promote Gilbert and the venues that we have here that would entice those people to stay here and spend their money here in Gilbert. So that kind of leads into the discussion of the bed tax. Let me give you just some brief background. Our bed tax was implemented back in July of 1995 at 3%. This is when we adopted the Model City Tax Code back in 1995. And included in that was the bed tax, which was 3% at that time. Back in 1995, there weren't any hotels in Gilbert. The tax was to prepare for the impacts that future visitors may have in the community as we grew. Included in the requirements of the bed tax, there's a minimum of 1% of the 3% that's collected to be used for tourism-related development or activity. This one's kind of a hard one to get your mind around of what the 1% means. And probably the easiest way for me to think of it is if we collect close to $300,000 in bed tax, $100,000 of that is obligated towards tourism, whether it's marketing or other tourism activities. The tax is imposed on the hotel or motel or the lodging, and it's not on the individual customer. One thing to remember is that the visitors that come to our community are entitled to town services just like anybody else, but they're, in some cases, they're not responsible to pay for those services. Certainly, they do pay a sales tax on goods and services they buy here, but when they're using our facilities, our streets, our parks, and so forth, they aren't paying any kind of a property tax that may be used to retire bond debt on that, so they aren't paying that tax. The tax is also used to market, as I mentioned, market the town and its attractions, which cannot be done by the individual hotels. And from my understanding, what this means is that the hotels themselves, their parent companies prohibit them from doing any kind of marketing of the community itself. Their marketing is limited only to their hotel. And they rely on the bed tax to promote the community where the visitors come to use their facilities. Just very briefly, the current tax, which stands at 3%, this is what we've collected during the past year and what we've collected year-to-date. You can see there are some variations there, but the total number down there, for instance, for the fiscal year '13, the $70,000 is very close to the same amount that we collected last year. And you can see the bottom line, last year, we collected almost $300,000, $299,000. Some of the uses of the tax that is collected includes tourism-related items, like the museum. You do know that we had a contract with the Chamber of Commerce who was doing much of our tourism marketing. That was included in the numbers. Arts donations, $8,000, Big League Dreams debt. We have taken the bed tax, and as you can tell here, we are using the bed tax as well as some of the general fund in tourism-related activities in this particular case. We wanted to very briefly compare other East Valley cities with Gilbert on the tourism marketing investment. And this is about marketing, which is really important for our community. If we want to attract those visitors, we have to do a good job of marketing the community and what we have to offer. You can see in comparison, most of the communities around us are spending a significant share of what they collect in bed tax for marketing only. A good example is Scottsdale, which collects $6.35 million. 50% of that is just for marketing. The other 50% is invested in tourism-related infrastructure or activities. So virtually 100% of their money is invested in tourism, whether it's in marketing or other types of tourism-related development. In years past, we've been, we have marketed or invested in marketing up to 9% of the total that we've taken in. That changed this year. Our investment has actually grown up to 33% of what we're taking in, is we have increased the amount that we're using for tourism for the community. In addition to that, we've also received from the Proposition 302 that was passed, the money, there's a portion of that money that was used for sharing with communities and promoting tourism. And we have received a portion of that, $47,000, which the Mesa Convention and Visitors Bureau is helping us with our current tourism development, which includes a website. And in the future, we'll be also talking about development of some mobile apps that would market the town, especially in the Heritage District. You can see that some of the communities have actually increased their tax rates to 5%. One interesting thing to note is, as I did some research on these, virtually all of those took that to the people and had a vote of the people to increase that to 5%. Some of the money was earmarked for specific purposes, others not, other than for tourism-related activities. Scottsdale was very concerned about their tourism, and that's why they increased their bed tax from 3% to 5%, because they wanted to invest more in the marketing and also tourism development in the community. And they're doing quite well with it. That concludes my presentation, Your Honor, and I'd be happy to answer questions if I can. As I said, we have other experts on taxes and we have some of the users in the community also that are here that can answer questions also.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I appreciate the homework that was done, the discussion, opportunity, presentation as well. This is something I've been thinking a lot about for a long, long time. And we can have a full discussion today, but I also thought we might continue the discussion to the beginning of next year, maybe in February. But if there's no desire for that, we can continue. But I'll look to others, see what they think.
Thank you. Other discussion? Pardon?
Well, I just don't see why we should wait to have the discussion until February unless there's something specific. I think that it's on the agenda, we can have it today.
We'll have a little bit different council, but not much. But I thought that may change the discussion some, so maybe not.
I think it's probably appropriate. I mean, we've had the organization do the work and it seems timely for us to have that type of discussion. I see the bed tax as being our visitor's user fee for the town of Gilbert, essentially. We don't charge admission to our parks. We don't have toll roads in Gilbert. But these are all amenities and services that our visitors are using. And right now, I just don't see any compelling reason to eliminate the bed tax. When I travel to other places, the bed tax is not really on the radar as far as, oh, I'm going to stay in this community versus another community. I don't see a problem with getting rid of it. I think we should be more strategic in our utilization of the dollars. And I think that's probably a discussion that I would love to have further discussion on. And of course, I would love to hear the ideas and suggestions of both other councilmembers and then also of our staff. But as far as the elimination of the bed tax, that's not something that I'm interested in doing right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I wanted to respond to some of the points that have been made in the presentation. First of all, I want to capture the people, too. I want them to stay here. And I think by removing the bed tax, it creates more of an incentive to be here because it's not as expensive as somewhere that has one. People consume more at lower prices than they do at higher prices. It's basic economics. That's one thing. The other thing is, the argument that the visitors don't pay, I don't agree with. I think that's completely untrue. The hotels, whatever taxes the hotels pay, property taxes, the communication taxes, you name it, whatever they pay, they have to pass on. They have to. They have no choice. They have to go out of business if they don't pass on their costs. The people that pay it are the people that stay in the motels, in the hotels. The other thing is, when they drive around on the roads, they use fuel here. There's a fuel tax. Currently, our fuel tax covers the full maintenance cost of our streets. That may not last forever because our streets are new, but again, they're paying to use our streets as well. The sales tax that they pay when they spend their money also goes to all of these things. So they pay just like anybody else does, because wherever they stay has to pay, and we are putting a special tax on them. Now, let's go back to this issue of people voted directly for it. Of course, they did. They're taxing somebody outside of town who has no say over that election process. Of course, they voted for it. In fact, that's my biggest concern with it, is it is taxation without representation. It's specifically targeted to those who can't speak to the issue. Now, my argument for why this is a good idea is, number one, we're not, you spoke to, we're not using it very strategically. I agree with you. But we've spent 10 times the amount we're required to on stuff that qualifies. And we keep getting more and more asks for it. So it's the tax that keeps on taking, as far as I'm concerned, because nobody feels like they're getting their fair share of the bed tax. I hear it from almost every group I talk to. So that's another issue I'm concerned with. But it is good economics. We need to keep the money in the private sector. They'll make better use of it than we will in government. We're going to take some cutout to pay some bureaucracy somewhere. They're going to make better use of it. They had to earn it through free exchange. That's harder work than taking it by force, so they will value it better. And so, also, I really do believe that it will help the tourism industry. I think of the example, I have a friend back from New Hampshire. New Hampshire and Massachusetts are very different, right near each other, but New Hampshire has no sales tax. And so, if you go to the New Hampshire-Massachusetts border, you get all the houses on the Massachusetts side. All of the stores are on the New Hampshire side. It's crazy. It's nuts. Why? Well, there's no sales tax there. Of course, that's where they go. And that's where all of the activity is. So I'm not talking about eliminate the sales tax, okay? I'm talking about a special added tax that's especially assessed to a particular industry. I don't think that's a good idea. That's the best way to hurt the industry. Now, I'm going to be real open. I've talked with the hotels. They want this to stay. I'm not going to lie to you. Except for one, in-town suites, the guy from there, he agrees with me. Okay? He's not a member of the chamber, I don't think. Maybe he is, I don't know. But he liked the idea of repeals. So the question is, why are the hotels opposed? Because I want to hit this straight on. I don't know if they're going to like this explanation. The only one that I can come to, though. The parent companies, they're mostly flag hotels, the ones that I've talked to. They don't have a way to advertise that there's no bed tax, or at least that's against some policy. That means the hotels that can make use of that advertising opportunity may have a competitive advantage over them. And maybe they don't want that. I don't know. Maybe the flags need to rethink their marketing options for some of their folks. So I expect that everyone will find a way to make use of this, because they'll need to in order to compete. Anyway, bottom line is, I think this is better economics than anything government will ever do. Private market knows how to promote itself better than government ever will. I think it's a horrible idea to go out there, we could specially assess a tax on the home building industry so that you can turn around and subsidize it. That's a horrible idea. I heard of an idea that went through the Obama administration about a fresh-cut tree tax. Yeah, they were going to assess as a special tax on themselves, but then they get to blame the government for it, but then that tax was supposed to come back to support their industry. Well, since it was the Obama administration, I guess conservatives didn't like it. It got shot down. Same concept, still a bad idea. That's my argument.
Do you have some thoughts on the comment about being more strategic of things we need to be doing or helping the process as a council?
Yes. You've started already to be strategic, because you've directed me to start working on a website, which is about three-quarters of the way finished now. And also, you've directed that we create a mobile app for the Heritage District. And we've talked about continuing on that same concept and maybe developing some more. And I'm in some discussions from other people that are into tourism marketing that we really need to investigate a little bit more in promoting the town. So those are the kinds of things we need to talk about, and that's what this money is used for.
Thank you. Scott, go back to the slide where you had the six hotels, or you had the cities, the Chandler Mesa, Tempe, Scottsdale. Yeah, that one. I think, to Councilmember Peterson, it is a great thought. And it got me thinking, and I'll look and see if there's other support. What caused me to say that I would be concerned is your comment when I was checking with some of the hotels. And I didn't realize that one wasn't in favor, and I thought that all six were. But when you look at that chart, you see that our neighboring communities that we're cheering on and want them to be successful, too, but they're finding ways, similar to an A-frame sign being out in front of a business, that when people are driving by, they see it and all of a sudden, they go, oh, that's of interest to me. They're finding ways to let visitors know that at this spot, at this spot, at this spot, there's something of interest. And it's a similar concept, and the hotel individuals I talked to said it's similar, that they're not, they're thinking of a community perspective of letting people know what's in Gilbert, because when people do go to a hotel, they want them to have a good experience. They want them to have good food, good amenities. So I think that it's a valid thought. It's just in a different situation where we're not in New Hampshire, that we have A-frame signs in a sense going up through the web, through magazines, through all sorts of different ways, that those 92% that come through Gilbert, they've got their mind from a magazine or a website to go elsewhere. And so... And so this is where we still want to give support, in my opinion. But I'm, I'm open to continued discussion, but right now, let me turn to the council. Is there anyone that wants to make a change, that wants to have further discussion on it right now? Councilmember Cook.
This has been a kind of a difficult one for me as well because I still haven't, in my mind, figured out really what the 3%, other than it's going into the general fund. And to me, along with Councilmember Peterson, you know, everyone that comes to Gilbert pays the same sales tax that we do when we eat, when we drink, when we drive. And to me, it's like we're adding an additional amount of dollars for our visitors that come into Gilbert. And again, I'm trying to understand from a strategic reason why we're even doing this. I remember there was a time where I thought about maybe the dollars that we got from the bed tax would go in, directly into economic development. But again, we haven't had that discussion. So again, the way it stands, I'm not in favor of continuing with the bed tax unless we have further discussion as strategically how we want to do this. Because I was looking at this, you know, there's about a million dollars of what we call qualified funding sources where this could be applied to. And if we had a strategy where maybe that $1 million, we wanted to use the bed tax, I mean, that bed tax would be, you know, 11 to 12%, and we could literally wipe out, you know, all of those expenses. Is that a strategy that we would like to do in Gilbert? So I think there's needs to be further discussion about this.
Now, I, I heard you say two things. One is you are in favor of a strategy versus also maybe on the bed tax. If we had a good strategy you felt comfortable with?
I think we have to have the discussion.
Okay.
Without that strategy right now, to me, I'm not in favor of it.
Right. I can say this, that Mace has a very specific strategy. They are being very successful with that strategy, very specific cities they're going to and so forth. And I think that's what I am possibly hearing is to enhance a strategy would make you feel more comfortable. But let me see if there's anyone else that... Councilmember Daniels?
I just wanted to make the statement that I'm not interested in utilizing the bed tax dollars to promote private business. I am interested in using those dollars to promote Gilbert. And I think our town is worthy of promotion. I think we have a lot to offer, and as time continues, we will have more to offer. Yes, it, it does cost a visitor to come to Gilbert. But as I stated, when I am going to a location because I want to or because I have to, I am not concerned about the bed tax. I need to stay somewhere. I want to, if I want to go there, I'm, I'm choosing the hotel that, that best fits, you know, my budget and my accessibility. I think we need to look at this from a visitor's perspective. Is a visitor put out by 3%? I don't think so. I think that they're looking at that as, hey, when I, when I pay the 3%, you know, now there'll be more for me when I get there. And that's sort of how I look at, at a, at a bed tax. I think we could have maybe a little bit different discussion if there's an interest in low... We tax our rental properties. We had that discussion a couple of years ago, and, and we do tax our rental properties. Why would we not then tax a hotel rental? That's a very similar example to me. So I hear the argument, the taxation without representation. Our citizens are who we represent. The visitors are then also represented by our citizens in Sudo. I don't see that as being anything different. They're all represented by a different... And the point about Massachusetts, which I've actually lived in Massachusetts, Massachusetts and New Hampshire, the property tax rate in New Hampshire is through the roof. Their corporate structure is very different than what we have here in Arizona. So I, it may just be a distribution of funds in a different way, but our sales tax, as you know, is basically what our community runs on for the most part. And so I don't really see that as an apples-to-apples comparison when we're talking about tax structures and the ability to both be taxed and to pay tax.
Because we have two additional items that are also of great interest to those here, let me just, I'm looking to my left and right, and what I'm seeing is continued interest to be strategic. And at this point, that would be the, the counsel we would give to town leadership and where we need some guidance and where we need to get some input, I think that we'll be anxious to do that. Let me have Councilmember Peterson have additional comment, then we'll move on.
I just want to comment on the, the need for a regional effort. I recognize there is an opportunity in grouping together as a regional effort to promote the whole area. Get that. I just don't think government needs to do it. I think that could be done voluntarily by a private association that's voluntarily joined by the stakeholders of that organization. If they feel like that money is useful, we can keep it back in the private sector and they can use it that way, and they can promote their, the region through that. So I just don't see a need for government to take this role. The private sector can promote itself, and I think it does so better than government ever will, so.
Looks like I'll slip in one more. Councilmember Cooper?
One more. I'm not going to rehash the philosophical arguments back and forth, but I have, I have heard a couple of comments about needing a strategy, and I just will return your minds to just six months ago when we asked for a strategy. A strategy was presented to the council. The council decided they weren't ready for the strategy. And so this is circular to me and disappointing that when, you know, I want a strategy as well. I think we need to increase our investment, not the tax, but increase our investment in tourism promotion. And I'd love to have that discussion. This other discussion to me is not really of interest.
Thank you. We move to agenda item number three, prescription discount card.
Mayor Lewis, members of council, Gabe England, assistant to the town manager. Item number 12 on Thursday's council agenda is the approval of a revenue and marketing contract with Financial Marketing Concepts for the administration of a prescription drug discount benefit card. Under this agreement, the town would grant non-exclusive revocable use of the town logo to FMC and endorse their prescription discount benefit card, the Coast to Coast Card. The town will receive $1.25 in royalty payments for every valid prescription that's filled using this card. And citizens have no cost or enrollment necessary to sign up, and the benefit to the citizens is receiving discounts on prescriptions and pharmacy services as well as dental vision, hearing, and veterinary appointments. The Coast to Coast Card is currently in use in all Arizona counties, and it's been endorsed by our peer cities of Phoenix, Chandler, and Glendale. The average savings per prescription for citizens in these cities since the marketing agreement went into effect was $38.57, which is about 66% off of retail. The total savings on prescriptions for citizens in these cities is approximately $6 million. And with that overview, I'm happy to answer any questions council has.
Questions or comments?
Gabe presented this to me, and I asked lots of questions saying, you know, where's the snag or where's the catch? And it seems to be low risk and high benefit for the citizens, and that's what I heard back, but I wanted the council to hear that too.
Yeah. My couple of questions here is, one, I don't know really how, I mean, it doesn't look like it's going to be a huge revenue generator for the town, just based on the numbers I've seen from the other communities. But it may be of benefit to the citizens, and so that's, that's good. If, will, will there be any administrative overhead on our part that is not being taken into account on the ROI? And then while I've got the mic, I'll just ask, have we looked at other, are there competing groups out there doing the same thing?
Councilmember Cooper, to your first question, no, there's no administrative cost to the town at all. It's completely administered by Financial Marketing Concepts. We receive the royalty payments in exchange for the logo, and that's, that's the extent of the agreement we'll have. To your second question, Phoenix released an RFP prior to signing this contract with FMC. After awarding the contract, they later added in a cooperative agreement where other towns could use their RFP. I believe they received four responses. FMC scored an 88 out of 100 on theirs. There are other companies that do this. I, I'm not aware of any that pay a royalty of $1.25.
Thank you. So if we give direction to Gabe to proceed, this is not a time where we do motion or votes, it's just more of a...
We're doing it Thursday night. I don't understand.
Okay.
Presentation tonight.
This is pre-appetizer.
Oh.
Pre-appetizer.
Mayor, I'll just act, ask a couple of questions. I already did, but so people's minds are at ease about a few things. Is there any way the price can go up for a consumer by using the card?
No, the price will remain the same or be discounted.
Okay. Is there any risk to the, the town, the consumer, or the pharmacy?
No, there's no risk to the town or the consumer. The pharmacy enters into an agreement, so that would be an agreement with them and their pharmacy benefit manager, so I wouldn't be able to answer that.
But they would be the one choosing whether or not to accept the card, as the pharmacy making their own decision as to whether or not they wanted to do that?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
On Thursday, Gabe, this is agenda item number...
It's agenda item number 12.
12, okay. 12. Thank you. Thank you. Let's move to number three, excuse me, number four on the study session, the Regulatory Reduction and Independent Advocate Program. Gabe?
Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to be before you or remain before you again. Regulatory reduction was discussed at the council retreat earlier this year. We had a lot of conversation, none of which received majority support. From what we heard, staff researched how other municipalities have attempted regulatory reduction in business advocacy, and we found this topic is increasing in popularity and frequency, but there's a wide variation on both scope and success. Even though they take, or becoming more popular, they still take three forms. It's either an appointed commission, a task force, or an internal ombudsman. When researching these, we found there were drawbacks to each. The commission often led to a review that was too large to be successful. It had a large scope and unfocused recommendations. Task forces often weren't flexible enough, and it was hard to staff it with experts for the, the wide variety of codes or town policies that could come forward for review. And with the internal ombudsman, we got into a situation where government was policing itself, and we didn't have what we thought would be a truly independent review. What we tried to do is blend the successful portions of each of these programs so we could provide a timely, independent review of specific issues as they arise. We wanted to ensure the town code and requirements are constantly monitored. We wanted to allow for an alternative approach to resolving any alleged grievances, and this will assist the town in making long-term decisions with regards to town code and policies. The program should effectively crowdsource our regulatory reduction by keeping it under constant surveillance, for lack of a better term. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Vice Mayor Sence.
Gabe, it says here about some training offered by the town. Have we done a budget to see what this program's going to cost us in terms of administration and training, and what's the training program? Who's going to develop it? Who's going to deliver it? How often will it be delivered?
Sorry to cut you off. Vice Mayor Sence, we have not developed a budget. We anticipate that this will actually save staff cost and time. We will do a, a training initially with our advocates that have agreed to be part of the program at the beginning of the year, and then we'll review it, making course corrections as necessary. Right now, we think it's going to be staffed by development services staff, and the training will be designed with the advocates, seeing what kind of, what kind of needs they have in addition to general education of our code and policies.
Councilmember Daniels?
If I can just make a comment about the, the training aspect of it, because that was one of my concerns as well. Those who are designated as advocates, at least initially, already have substantial working knowledge and probably don't need what we would consider to be training for some, someone off the street who comes in and decides that they want to become an advocate. And so walking down this path slowly, the one or two or three designated advocates to start with and to initiate the program, if you will, really won't require very much training, if any at all. So I think that that's an important note because we don't want to just limit it to one or two individuals as far as who our designated advocates are, but at the same time recognizing that if an individual does not have a intimate working knowledge of how our processes and procedures are in the town, that they wouldn't be able to be a very good advocate. And so the cart before the horse, if you will, but yes, one at a time.
Thank you. Let's go Vice Mayor Sence and then Councilmember Peterson.
One of the concerns I have are the questions is the accessibility to staff. Are these people going to, these advocates be, will they be given free rein to call up staff or take staff time away from other things to do this?
Vice Mayor Sence, they, they won't have free, free rein in the way you're describing it. The town manager will appoint a designee who will be the point of contact for the advocates, and then meetings will be scheduled in, in a normal process.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I, I'm sensitive to that concern of, of taking additional staff time, but I really believe, and Gabe and I talked about this, but I believe it'll save them time because you're going to start to have a repository of knowledge outside of the town. You're going to have somebody who understands these, the answers to these questions so that they don't have to go to town, town staff as often. So yes, this person may be asking questions every once in a great while, but it'd be a lot fewer than if somebody who knows nothing is just trying to navigate the process and has no idea which direction they're going. So I think it's a good investment of, of training because I think it actually saves us on the back end on that. So I think there's a great promise in this, and I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this. This is, I'm very excited about this concept. I think it's a very good concept. You know, it was, I was going with the Regulatory Reduction Commission, so I can't take any credit. I think this is an improvement. And I did want to add one thing, though, that I'd like to see here. I know that whenever somebody's applying for approval for something, they'll be notified if, if they're unsuccessful in navigating that, they'll be notified of what I'm calling IRAs as a, as a acronym for this, but that they, they'll be given that list and contact information. I know, do we hate the acronyms? It's so much easier.
I have a very good acronym, the IRA.
Oh, well, there's lots of different ones. Earned, run, average? I don't know. This is, oh, that's an ERA. Oops. Pardon that. I'm not very good at baseball.
Baseball! Keep going.
Oops. Anyway, but what I am concerned with is will we let people know who are, the code compliance cases? So yeah, if they're proactively coming through our process and they can't make it, we let them know. But what if we're proactively going after them? I think that's even more important to let them know that, you know, what you're dealing with, coming in compliance, or maybe it's an issue that you shouldn't be dealing with, at least there's somebody to talk to who can walk them through it, let them know what it is, and, and maybe there'll be new ideas generated from that avenue as well. So is that going to be incorporated at this point?
Councilmember Peterson, yes. The notification process will be the same regardless if it's proactive on our part or reactive in denying a permit. Either way, we would have the same notification process.
Councilmember Cook?
All right. Now, I have a question pertaining to, have we run a couple test cases against this model so that we can actually, again, I'm, I'm just going to bring up the chicken in the, in the yard, you know, model? Because it sounds great, but to me, if we run a couple different test cases through the process that we can do before we actually put this out into the public and have us get scratched knees and, you know, bruised elbows and all that, what are your thoughts about maybe running through some of those scenarios internally prior to, and maybe sharing us some of the, you know, the things that you learned from that?
So Councilmember Cook, there's two answers to that question. Initially, we want to roll this out as a pilot program so we can make adjustments along the way, limiting the number of advocates who are available so we make sure we're not getting those scraped knees. The second answer is informally, this, this has been happening. We've been working with the same groups who have currently agreed to be our IRAs and bringing cases forward and working through a myriad of different situations. cases forward and working through a myriad of different situations, though chickens has not come up yet.
It will. No. Gabe, the discussion tonight, and you've packaged together, I like the word advocate. I think it's a good part of the title. And are you ready for the council to give direction to proceed? And this will become an item on a future agenda? Or do you just need tonight, thumbs up, go?
Right.
So, oh, we can't do a motion or a second, but we can do thumbs up? And I'm seeing heads nod, which is also a thumbs up, so you may proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. To the council, I'm going to return to the subject of future agenda items for Thursday night. I think we can do a few items right now that will save us some time on Thursday night. First, we have a parks meeting tomorrow night at 6:00. Either the mayor or Councilmember Cooper may need to leave for a few minutes and go to the redevelopment commission. We'll talk about that. And Thursday, we have our student citizen of the month at 6:30. Friday, Saturday, Gilbert days. And Vicky has been working to get feedback from us, and so, I won't repeat, but as we finish this study session and move to an executive session, if you could leave with Kathy, a list of your family members that will be coming to the parade on Saturday, that will be helpful, just so we know how many. And Councilmember Daniels, thank you for organizing and helping and various details, so we have a place to sit or walk and enjoy the parade as a council. As a council, do we all have white shirts, the white polo shirts? No, so you have the blue.
I just wear a...
So, either blue or white.
How about red also?
Do you have a red one?
I have red, white, and blue.
Okay. There's something special about Councilmember Daniels, and it has to do with the artistic style of our council. So, either white or blue. Let's go with that. What time should we meet?
Well, you won't be able to drive on Gilbert Road after 8:00 AM, so take that into consideration. But if we can meet at our, we're usually parked in front of Burger King, if I remember correctly, our float is. And so, if you can be there before 9:00, when the parade starts, that'd be great.
The rest of you before 9:00, for Mr. Lewis?
Mayor, 8:30.
8:30. How about 8:30? Yeah. All right. 8:30. 8:50. Do I hear anything? So, I think for those in the parade, they typically like to check and make sure we're ready, so why don't we say 8:30? And again, let Kathy know which family members are going to be attending.
And bring candy, if you can.
We have been invited to the rodeo, which is Friday night, 7:00, Saturday at 2:00, and Sunday at 2:00. There's also a little dudes rodeo Saturday at noon. The request was if we could come Saturday, too, because Jerry Maguire will be performing the Star Spangled Banner. And if you've not let Vicky know, please let her know who will be attending that. I think for Gilbert Days, that was it, as long as you let Kathy know which family members are going to be on the float. The additional item after Gilbert Days, next Tuesday night, this is something that was sent to us in an email, but is the annual Thanksgiving interfaith celebration. And you may still be checking calendars, but as of right now, how many of you are able to attend that? And that's at the First United Methodist Church.
Interfaith?
Interfaith, next Tuesday night at 7:00. Okay. Got it? All right. And I think the one last thing in the future meetings, to our town clerk, Kathy Templeton, we have listed canvassing the election on November 26 at 7:00 PM. Last time we did that, it was about a five-minute meeting, and so, we have some flexibility on time. And one council member suggested we do it before 6:00, so that it fits with our town leadership schedule. Would Monday night, the 26th, at 5:00 PM work? You may proceed to schedule a 5:00 PM meeting. And for council members, they could also call in on that if that were more convenient and just let Kathy know. Is there anything else on future meetings we missed? Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, for this meeting on Thursday, we had discussed previously that any items that were going to be on consent, if they were going to be pulled from consent, if we could move those to administrative to save time, are we going to follow that same?
Vice Mayor Sins, if you can help direct that, so... Thank you. And do we need to have any discussion on that?
There will be a few that I would want to not pull, but otherwise, yeah.
Just, I don't know if we can do it.
Seven and 10.
But all of those zoning are pretty perfunctory, and I don't know what the thought is of moving those to consent. And I know on public hearing, we can do them with one vote, but...
I think, as I inquired on that, because their list is public hearing, I believe I need to open a public hearing and close a public hearing. Is that correct, Susan?
That's correct, but we do take them all at one time, just as a consent.
Yeah. Okay. So, it'd be like a consent.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? We will end our study session, and I call to order a special meeting. Is there a motion to recess the special meeting and reconvene an executive session?
So moved.
There's a so moved. Vice Mayor Sins and a second with Councilmember Peterson.